Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hubley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Valerie Thompson, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
All right, welcome in everybody to the, um, to the March 24th city council meeting. This is probably, uh, well, not probably, it is one of the more unusual methods that we've ever undertaken at trying to conduct the city's business. We appreciate you joining us by, uh, either live stream or, uh, by watching CCG TV. We're doing things a little differently, but we're going to keep them the same. So we're going to begin with our invocation and our own counselor Valerie Thompson will lead us. So please bow your heads.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity you have given us to serve others. Father God, even in the midst of this pandemic, you are still God and you are still able. Father, we ask now that you help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Father God, give us a spirit of service. Remind us of all that we are and we are stewards of your authority. Father, we ask now that you guide us to be the leaders that the citizens of this community need during times like this. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence of your creation deserve. We pray now for our mayor. Father, we pray for our city counselors. Father God, we pray for staff. We pray for those that have been infected and Father God, we have, we pray for those who have been affected by this virus. God, we know that you are still able. And finally, Father, renew all of us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build community worthy of the people who reside here. We ask this all in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, counselor. Uh, we will also, listen, this is, and this is just another and a long list of challenges that this country has undertaken and they have always faced down and we're going through this one as well. Uh, but we are also going to take just a moment, uh, even though we're all in different places, to rise to our feet and pledge our allegiance to the symbol of our nation. So please stand in place.
I pledge allegiance to the flags of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, that was probably one of the more awkward pledges that we've done, but I appreciate y'all, y'all going through this. Uh, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from March 10th.
So moved.
Through a second.
Second.
All right, now counselors, one thing that we're going to be doing, uh, today that is a little tedious, but we will do a roll call vote. So, uh, Sandra, for every motion and a second, when we call the vote, she will call your name so that the, we can fulfill our commitment to transparency. So, Madam Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, for the minutes approval. Mayor Pro Tem Allen. Counselor Barnes.
So moved.
Counselor Crabbe.
Approved.
Counselor Davis.
Remove.
Counselor Garrett.
Approved.
Counselor House.
Approved.
Counselor Huff.
Approved.
Counselor Thomas.
Approved.
Counselor Thompson.
Approved.
Counselor Woodson.
Approved.
All right, thank you. The minutes passed. And the next step on the mayor's agenda and the last on the mayor's agenda is just to give you a quick update on this pandemic and how it's impacting us here in Columbus, Georgia. Uh, we continue to be actively engaged with all of our partners, including Fort Benning, uh, and our hospitals, uh, as well as the surrounding counties, the Department of Public Health, uh, the CDC, and then we get on conference calls with folks from the governor's office all the way up to the White House. The, the word is, is it hasn't changed and that is that, um, the people of this country and the people of the state and the people of this, this city are the ones who are in charge of how, how, uh, this, this virus spreads through the, the community. So we continue to urge distancing. Uh, that is the only thing that is going to stop this virus is if we continue to remain a minimum of six feet from one another. Uh, here in Muskogee County, we, uh, over the last week, uh, we have seen our first, uh, diagnosed case and we are up to four. There are four cases, uh, and, uh, all of those are being, uh, treated accordingly to the, based on their symptoms. We continue to, uh, work to try to get more testing kits. But it's important, I think, that the public continue to, to be reminded that these kits, while they are, are critical in helping us identify where the, the, the disease is spreading and, and monitoring those that, that have it and keeping up with numbers that are critical for CDC. The kit, kit will not make you feel better. It's not going to cure your symptoms. It's not going to make you feel, uh, any better than you do, do now. So if you feel sick, if you have, if you have any of the symptoms whatsoever, we urge you to go ahead and, and self-isolate. Uh, to that point, uh, there's been a few things in the, in the media recently about me quarantining myself. Uh, I did come into contact with an individual who, uh, was subsequently hospitalized and tested for the virus. Uh, the results should be, uh, available tomorrow. I, I feel great. I'll admit, I took a, a, I picked a bad time to start having these allergy and pollen issues because people are looking at me kind of sideways thinking maybe I am sick. But, uh, it's simply a losing battle with pollen that I fight every year. Uh, but, um, but the, but the, the main thing I want everybody to know is that, uh, we are going to get through this. We're going to get through this together. In fact, the only way we're going to get through it at a very low cost is for us to watch out for one another, keep our distance, wash our hands and stay home if we're sick. So, uh, that's an update. I don't know if any counselors have any questions that I can try to answer based on some of the information we've been getting from the, the DPHs or CDC, but I'll try to answer them. All right, hearing done. We'll, um, we'll turn it over. Yes, sir. Counselor Huff? Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor, uh, wanted to ask what are we doing as far as, uh, an update on the city employees and, and what are we doing as far as the public works crew? Cause I know we have probably most people populated there. So what are we doing to keep them safe?
Uh, we've actually, I'm going to let the city manager speak to most of that. He has been hard at work communicating with the department heads to get a plan of action for how all of those individuals are going to be doing their jobs. Uh, we are allowing people to telecommute where possible. Uh, and we are working to try to streamline the number of people who need to be in the, in the city government. Uh, Ms. City Manager, do you want to elaborate?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we have, um, been in constant communication with department heads. Uh, we've pretty much left things to department heads discretion in terms of people, um, coming to work physically and in the office or, uh, choosing to do a work from home test or alternate work schedule test. And, uh, we have those plans in hand from, uh, each of the various departments. Uh, our HR director has also issued a, uh, pandemic illness, uh, policy, uh, guide for department heads and elected officials, uh, that basically goes through and, um, um, provides some direction to department heads and employees about, uh, be it if they're sick or feel sick, uh, how to react, how to respond. Uh, and so we've issued a number of policies and statements and I believe department heads are doing an excellent job. They're giving us feedback. Any issues or concerns are going through our HR department. But, um, we are doing everything in our power to keep them safe. And as you know, we've asked, uh, department heads and elected officials to be sensitive to those employees who have school age kids or kids in daycare because we know that the, the schools in Muskogee County and in Harris County and other jurisdictions that our employees may come from have been closed and daycare centers are closed. So, uh, work from home test plans are in place and, uh, they are sensitive to those employees, uh, who have those circumstances.
Okay, last, uh, question was I had a neighbor to approach me as far as what we were doing as far as the inmates going in and out and the public works, uh, professionals there being, you know, are they being exposed to anything or what's the rule as far as inmates coming in and out, going back in and out of the population and then the public works people as far as trying to pick up trash and things of this nature?
Well, uh, uh, again, the Muskogee County Prison and, uh, Warden Dwight Hamrick, uh, has been, uh, included and involved in monitoring not only his employees, but, uh, prisoners as well. Again, we're sensitive and we want to make sure that if they have symptoms of any kind, you have correctional officers around them, even if they don't acknowledge it themselves. Uh, we identify those people and, uh, they, um, we'll hold them in if they, um, can visibly see any symptom, but they are, it's communicated to them as well. If you've got symptoms, let us know that we don't, uh, expose you to others and we don't want to expose others to prisoners that they take it back into the Muskogee County Prison. So, uh, I've been communicating with not just the Muskogee County Prison, but with the jail as well. Uh, Sheriff Donna Tompkins has been dealing with this issue as well. Uh, the police department is there out and about, uh, doing what they do and answering 911 calls. Uh, they know what to look for and how to deal with, uh, those they're engaged with and trying to keep their physical, uh, distance from them. So, um, but protocols are in place and, uh, department heads and elected officials, uh, are, are adhering to those protocols. And, uh, of course, our HR director, we're posting, uh, things on our website daily having to do with COVID-19 that not just the employees, but the public can also visit columbusca.org and, uh, keep up with the latest news as it relates to COVID-19.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
What are we doing, um, I saw something in the news earlier. What are we doing with first responder? Are we having the same problems at other communities where they don't have the right protective gear like the mags, the shield, the gloves? What are we doing for our first responders in our hospitals?
They, they are covered. They have, uh, they, in fact, they just got a recent shipment of the PPEs. They are, uh, and I've actually seen them in, uh, action as they, uh, took a patient to, um, uh, a hospital in the emergency room. They are completely covered. They suit up. They follow protocol. They know that dispatch is helping because when 911 is able to alert them ahead of time. Uh, let's say they call and they say they've got a headache. Well, the, the dispatch is asking some additional questions like, do you have any respiratory issues? Do you have a fever? So that they know what they're getting into when they walk in. When they get there, they immediately mask the, the patient. They are completely covered head to toe in, in, uh, in the correct, uh, personal protective, uh, gear. And then they make sure that they communicate with the hospital that they're going to so they can meet them and take them in a side entrance so they don't have to go through the general population. Uh, but, but you, you bring up two of the heroes of our community in our medical, uh, health professionals and our first responders. These folks are on the front line every day and, uh, they are protected as protected as they can be. But, but that's one of the reasons, uh, we have to be so serious about making sure that we do keep our distance from one another because if the hospitals get overwhelmed, some of these, these personal protective gear and the equipment, um, it's harder to come by. And, and that's the biggest fear for us right now is that if we don't, if we don't get folks serious about the social distancing, staying home if you're sick, covering your mouth if you cough. If we can't get people serious about that, we could possibly have an issue at our hospitals trying to make sure we have the resources. But right now, uh, both of the hospitals, uh, are, uh, are in good shape and we, we communicate with them every single day getting updates on their equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Henderson, uh, one of the things that have been asked me is that whether or not we have, if we have sufficient test kits here in Columbus, in the Muskogee area.
And my, my answer to that would be if you remove sufficient, I'll say yes.
Okay.
We do have some test kits, but, um, no, in my estimation, we are, we don't have enough. Uh, we've, they've been hard to come by. Uh, I will tell you that the protocol for testing is that they test the most vulnerable of our population first. They prioritize health, healthcare professionals and first responders, but then they also prioritize elderly patients who might have some underlying, uh, conditions. Uh, but they are testing. Uh, we've, we've had, uh, a number of them done at a drive-through, uh, on, uh, at Mercy Med and then I actually visited the drive-through over there behind the health department. Uh, but they ran out of the kits rather quickly. Now, my understanding is from the Department of Public Health, they've got about three times the number they normally get coming in tomorrow. Uh, but you know, I, I would submit to you though, as we get more kits, we're going to see our numbers go up because people, when they get to feeling like they've got flu symptoms, they just need to go home and stay home, monitor their condition. If they get really bad, then they need to call their doctor to arrange to get them into the, in the emergency room. But most, most patients, over 80% of the people that get this are going to have very few to, to very mild symptoms. So they just need to be smart.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mayor, this is.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Who was that?
Mayor, this is Glenn, um, Glenn Davis.
Yes, sir.
Look, uh, I know this is a new video venue that we're working on here and I want to be sensitive to everybody. I'm, um, you opened the floor up to questions. I don't know how the rest of the meetings going to go, but do, would you like to proceed with questions and concerns now or, uh, at this time? If, if so, I mean, I'll, I'll throw some concerns out to you. If you want to write them down, then I'll let you all work on them from there.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, we can, we'll, we'll take any concerns that you have, uh, you know, with, uh, this is a fluid situation. We monitor it not just hour by hour, but minute by minute. Uh, we did put into, uh, did put into place some, uh, uh, emergency procedures as of Friday that we're going to ask you all to vote on and give it the weight of an ordinance. Uh, but, um, but yeah, I mean, we, your concerns are probably ours. So feel free to share them.
Well, if you take, uh, you'll write these, uh, points then that I have here and then I'll just let you address them to the, uh, to the general counsel here in the body at hand. The mayor, I know it was, you just mentioned something about the emergency rooms. Are the, are the emergency rooms turning away citizens unless you have a vital need? If you're showing, in other words, if you're just showing up with, you know, I don't feel good, kind of common cold kind of symptoms, will they see you versus seeing those that, seeing those that you would put in a category as a, as really a need? That's one. The second thing is, uh, from a city standpoint, are we doing everything to make sure that our hospitals and our healthcare providers are getting the, um, someone's talked about our, uh, our public safety and first responders and all, but are we doing our fair share as a city to get the equipment and the needs and the supplies, logistics to our hospitals, to our nurses, to our ICUs, our emergency rooms and so forth? I'm hearing stories there that, uh, they're not where they need to be. I don't know how that's, uh, transpired and if you would put that down as a, as a question. The, the other one is, uh, another one is garbage buildup. And this is more on the private side versus public. I know that we're continuing our services and making sure that there's a pickup there, but I'm starting to see, uh, starting to get concerns about mass buildup of, uh, garbage and things of that nature out in the public. So I'm concerned about on the private sector, how that's being handled. The, the other one is a big one. Of course, we're all in this together. It's unprecedented times and, um, you know, we're all going to be, um, impacted in some way or another. Maybe some greater than others, but I am receiving a lot of calls from businesses and small businesses. Our response to them is that our declaration, our emergency declaration complies and goes along with what we're receiving from the state and the governor's office. But they are concerned about getting their businesses back opening, opening and the impact there. Uh, of course, there's going to be impact to the employment, but that seems to be a concern of small businesses and, um, some of them are asking if they can, you know, where's the boundaries? They see some of their, um, I guess they see their businesses operating and then they're not operating. So they want to know timelines and boundaries. Uh, that may be a one you can touch on. And then the last thing in the case of, uh, public services being provided, um, if there's a need for, uh, drivers, operators, uh, uh, just people to help, whether it's temporary help or whatever, do we have that plan in place that we can keep going or do we need to look at, uh, uh, hiring or employing temporary help to fill in those gaps? Those, those are my questions.
All right. Um, well, I'll, I'll hit them all kind of quick and make sure I'm getting them all answered. Uh, are the hospitals turning away non-critical people walking in the emergency rooms? I can't answer that. I'll, I'll, I'll check on that. My assumption would be yes, but I don't think they're limiting their, their, uh, their emergency rooms to just COVID-19 and respiratory, uh, issues. Uh, the, uh, the, the hospitals, we, I have a conversation almost every day and we try to keep tabs on where they are from an equipment standpoint. And I think there's two answers. The answer currently, do we have enough PPEs for the healthcare workers? The answer I think that I'm getting from the hospitals anyways, yes. We are working with them. Uh, Chief Futrell, who, uh, runs, uh, our, uh, Homeland Security and Emergency, uh, uh, Management, uh, he is in communication with them and he's helping them also try to get some access to different vendors if, uh, if theirs dry up. Um, but the second piece of that answer is, if this continues to swell and it accelerates, will we maintain, uh, the ability to be able to take care of, of those folks from a hospital standpoint? That's the unknown and that's why it's critical that the citizens do their part and take this seriously by practicing that distancing and doing those very simple things that they can do. Uh, garbage buildup, uh, privately, we, or excuse me, publicly, we, uh, city manager has already identified a number of individuals that can fill in if something happens to the jail or the, or the prison and we can't get the, uh, the, uh, prison labor. Uh, so we're going to make sure, we may end up at some point having to cut back to just garbage pickup and, and delay the, uh, the, the recycling and the, uh, yard waste and focus on just the stuff that will, will create the most problems. I did speak to a private contractor and he had, his concern was that they were going to be able to function. And I said, absolutely, uh, y'all are a critical, uh, y'all are a critical piece in an essential business because you, you helped to manage the health, safety and welfare of the community. I don't know of any areas where it's building up. If there is, if there is a, uh, a, a private contractor that maybe is not fulfilling their obligations, you need to let us know and we'll reach out to them and see what we can do to help them get it, get it on track. Um, businesses, that's, that's the, that's the one that I can tell you. I've, I've gotten about two hours of sleep a night and, and it's because I understand the impact of these businesses. We understand that in, in our, our executive order that you guys are going to be asked to ratify tonight. We didn't close very many industry, very many business sections. Uh, we, we restricted and followed the CDC guidelines for accessing those, the, uh, all businesses. We limited it to 10 unless they had a footprint of more than 30,000 square feet and then we allowed them to have 50. Uh, most of them are doing some amazing things and complying. Now, there are some that are, are still, haven't caught on to how serious this is that they comply and try to help us manage this, but we're in communication with them. Um, so we obviously, we obviously don't have enough police to send them throughout the city, but words getting to us in the mayor's office and the city manager's office, people telling us when folks are not complying with the, the requirement. Um, and you know, we're doing this incrementally. There are other, uh, cities that have actually done shelter in place orders. Uh, there are other cities that have, uh, closed what they termed non-essential businesses. So we haven't gotten there yet, but we're monitoring it very, very closely and, and frankly, reserve the, the, uh, the, the, the right to be able to do that. Uh, our number one objective is to try to keep people safe. And frankly, if everybody complies and we'll just kind of keep that, that space between them and others, this thing will run its course in just a few weeks in Columbus, Georgia. Um, and with public services, uh, we, I don't know that we've really identified any sources of, of extra individuals. Uh, I'm certain that we'll have to, we will do that when we get to a point where we, uh, are seeing mass sick outs. I don't think we'll see that because just like you were talking about a minute ago with the, the people handling the, the trash, you, you still won't get infected and they won't get infected unless they get within a certain distance of other people. They're wearing gloves and they're, they're being careful and, and handling those materials. So, um, I hope those are some short answers to what are some serious questions.
Yeah, Mayor, I want to thank, I know, I don't know about the rest of my colleagues and the rest of the, uh, uh, people on this conference. Every once in a while, it cuts out. It's cutting out on my computer, but I'm trying to stay out of it and I appreciate you answering those questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. And Ms. Counselor Thomas, I heard you a few minutes ago.
Um, yes, Ms. Mayor, um, one of the things that, um, I have been telling people is that if they have questions or concerns, if they would call 311, uh, 311 can get that question to the right person. Uh, I'm, I can't answer all of the questions because I don't have all of the information. But just like most everything else in our city, if you'll call 311, they know who to direct that to and it's not an imposition for you to call 311. Um, it may be after I say this on the air, but, uh, I, I really do think that that's a source, that's a tremendous source for our citizens to get the right information if they want to report something or if they want to question something.
And the business of doing business in the city continues to go forward. So if you still, still, if you see potholes or you see some issues on the side of the road, still call 311 and let us know. All right. Yes, ma'am. All right.
Or use our new 311 app.
That's right. You can use your new 311 app. All right, I'm going to, uh, we'll move to the city attorney's agenda. Mr. City Attorney?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, everybody. The agenda tonight, we've got three items, um, business items. The first one is a zoning item. The second two, um, are things that we're going to adopt on one reading only by a roll call vote, if that's the will of the council. But the first one up is just the second reading of zoning, uh, property at 401 35th Street, a neighbor works petition. It's, uh, ready for action.
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Uh, any discussion? All right, uh, when, when the clerk calls your name, just say yes for an I vote and say no for a no vote. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, can we, as we proceed through the meeting, if the member of council that makes the motion, if they can, uh, state their name first and as well as the person that's making the second, um, that way we can keep up with, uh, who's making the motion in the second.
That's a good idea. I think Counselor Garrett made the motion. I thought Counselor Crabbe made the second, if I'm not mistaken.
Thank you. Counselor Barnes?
Yes.
Crabbe?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Huff?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that vote carried by the nine members that are present.
All right, thank you.
This is Gary. Can you hear me?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I've just been notified that, uh, Mayor Pro Tem is available. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Allen, we're on number one on the city attorney's agenda.
How about yes?
Is it yay or nay?
He said yes.
Yay?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's 10 members of council that are present.
Good deal. Mr. City Attorney?
All right, Mayor, that passes unanimously. Item two is an ordinance that would be a declaration of local emergency. This, uh, I'm going to go through each section of this. It, um, affirms the local declaration order already performed by the mayor on March 20th. Um, the first section adopts the findings in the, uh, clauses up above the, um, body of the ordinance itself as facts of the council. These are factual findings. The mayor and council do declare a state of emergency in Columbus and they confirm the declaration of the local emergency ordered by the mayor on March 20th, which is incorporated herein. Uh, the declaration includes restrictions on gatherings of more than 10 people and business activities which have been discussed at some length. Those will all remain in effect until April 6th. We have changed that date to April 6th to be consistent with the governor's executive order from yesterday. Uh, and then at that time, of course, council could extend it if they desire to. The, uh, the regulation of all those, uh, gatherings and business activities. In section four, the council is suspending the bid and competitive portions of the procurement policy until April 30th. Section five, the April 1 deadline for obtaining business license.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I have a question on number four. Do you want to do it now or you want to wait until, um, he goes all the way through?
No, I mean, I'd go ahead and bring it up now.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, would you, would you go into, I mean, Mr. City Attorney, would you go into a little more detail of what that means to suspend the bid and competitive portions of the procurement policy? What, what kind of authority does that now give our finance department and the city manager that, that they did not have before this?
Well, certain contracts would have to be taken on a sealed bid under the procurement ordinance, uh, things like construction, certain office supplies, uh, and that will all be suspended during this portion. You just won't have to get three quotes for certain items. You won't have to get competitive bids for certain items. I can think of office furniture. We've got, uh, a vendor that's under contract. Uh, there might be things that are a sole, sole source only provider and those can be utilized during this period.
Is this restricted to, um, those items that, that were in, were budgeted for or is it new material, new items?
Now, these would be, uh, in, in every department's budget. If they've got some emergency that they don't have a budget for, they're going to have to go to the city manager and come back to you as a council.
Okay, I, it, and it seems to me, if I recall correctly, Mr. City Attorney, that this is not the first time this particular type regulation has been in place. Is that correct over the years? I mean, this is not a, a brand new phenomenon for the, um, finance department. Is that correct? I believe we've done this before, haven't we?
I think we have as to the limit on, uh, certain purchases. I don't recall a declaration of emergency quite like this, but we've definitely had changes on the limits that department heads and the city manager could bring to you all. And also, uh, emergency situations have arisen where the city managers had to inform you about it later and the particular cost, but, so we've done similar things, not, not exactly this.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, I've got a question. I'd like to, uh, I'd like you to expand a little bit on the 10 people, uh, the gatherings. Um, that was one of the questions I asked earlier as it relates to businesses. Uh, as I stated, some businesses are open, others are feel like they don't have, uh, maybe the 10 people gathering, but it is in an environment, uh, I guess it's kind of been deemed, uh, that, that you cannot operate. I'm going to use an example of maybe a, a small health club, a swipe card health club or something where there may be four, five, six people in there, a small gym facility or something like that, exercise. And I've received some of those concerns about that, where you draw the delineation or if there is one. Could you, uh, expand on that a little bit, uh, from that standpoint?
I'd be glad to.
You understand the question I'm asking, right?
I do. And there are some industries that we decided that because of the proximity or the nature of the business, uh, for example, the YMCA is also a, a health club facility. We shut down, uh, and we, we conferred with other mayors, we looked at what's going on around the country and, um, the gym environment with, uh, with the type of activity that goes on there is a, uh, was considered to be a, a likely place for, uh, those, the virus to be passed along. Uh, we did the same thing on any business that has close personal contact. Uh, in other words, if you do facials or you do therapeutic massages or you do nails or you're a hairdresser, um, we suspended that operation. And keep it in mind that this is temporary and, and we're not going to suspend them for one day longer than we absolutely think is necessary. But there were some, there were some industries that we felt like, um, felt like should not be open.
Mayor, this, uh, is it right, is it correct for me to say when, when I have people to, uh, call me that this is in line with a declaration that's not only from the CDC but from the governor's office, right?
The governor has followed suit in the, uh, in, in what he mentioned, uh, yesterday, I believe. Um, but these have been, the, but you're correct, we followed the CDC guidelines. Uh, we agonized over, uh, allowing the big box stores to go to 50, but we figured, uh, our thinking was that since just the week before, when the, the maximum number had been around 50, uh, for large stores with over 30,000 square feet, that was, uh, that was enough space for them to con, to, to continue to kind of create that distance. But it is, it is in accordance with the CDC and the governor's, uh, issue, uh, is, is also in line with that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Will continue, City Attorney?
Sure will. Uh, section five, um, as I mentioned, will extend the deadline for city business licenses and occupation tax from April 1 to May 1, 2020. Section six, alcohol distributor excise tax, mixed drinks excise tax, vehicle rental excise tax, uh, that any of those during, due during April shall be extended by 30 days. Uh, any actions required of an official like the finance director, for example, uh, approves the issuance of alcohol licenses, uh, within 30 days of receiving that, an application, finance director has to act on it, but under this provision will give them, uh, the finance director or whoever the official is another 30 days to act. Uh, section eight, all boards, commissions and authorities are hereby authorized to cancel any scheduled meeting during this emergency period and they can do teleconference meetings, um, as long as the requirements of the state law about public access are met. Section nine, this will retroactively, um, approve the board of honor action on March 11, 2020, uh, since they might have a harder time getting a quorum. We didn't want to force them to try to meet again. It, this will approve what they did and a recommendation to the council. Section 10, it says that this ordinance will take effect upon passage by the mayor and council and, uh, each section has its specific expiration terms, but the mayor does have power under any emergency circumstance to extend these provisions in increments of up to 30 days until the emergency is dissolved by the council. And that, in a nutshell, is the ordinance for declaration of local emergency. Uh, the main things are the business gathering restrictions and some of them are city business deadline, uh, are being extended. Any other questions about it?
Yes, uh, your attorney, Mr. Mayor, uh, if y'all, it's my understanding under this declaration that one of the concerns that I've had and some of us council members have talked about this is that it's looking, with us meeting every other week and the, what we're, the venues that we're, we're trying to use now and so forth, that it may be hard to make contact or to reach out or to get the necessary support that you need based on our charter and how we go about doing business in the city. In other words, where you need to make a decision and get something done and you need resources, whether it's financial or any kind of resources, God forbid another, um, I, I, I guess, um, situation may happen like we had last year about this time in March with a, with a, with a, a local emergency. If that does happen in combination with what's going on, you're going to have to make quick decisions. It's my understanding that this document allows, under the discretion of the mayor and the city attorney, this is my question, that the city manager and the mayor can make those decisions, uh, without having to consult or to seek or have council's approval on this. Am I right?
That's right. This section 10 specifically addresses letting the mayor act to, uh, extend any of these provisions and of course, the city manager already has certain power to deal with emergencies. They would each have authority to deal with such matters. The mayor can specifically go in 30-day increments, uh, if any of these things need further attention.
Well, I, I think that's, uh, in, in this time, in present time, that's a, that's necessary. I would think that we need to have, uh, Mayor, that you need to have that ability to, to operate and run our city and protect our city.
Well, and it's, it's unlikely if, unless time just absolutely prohibited it, uh, it's unlikely that I would take any further action without notifying all the council anyway. As, as y'all know, I try to make sure that you guys are up to date on what we're doing and what we're about to do. All right?
Mayor, this, uh, yes, Garrett, I had a question about, um, homestead exemption. Uh, the, the person that called said she was told she had to file that in person and I was wondering if that was addressed. I didn't hear it in what you read out, uh, Clifton, but I was wondering if that has been addressed at some point.
Uh, we, we cannot change those deadlines locally, but we have gotten word through ACCG, some of our affiliate groups and the D, and the Department of Revenue is specifically allowing people to mail in their homestead applications that are due April 1. They need to be postmarked by April 1 for everybody listening that, that needs to file. But locally, you don't have the authority to extend the homestead, uh, application deadline, uh, or any state tax avalour payment deadline.
Yeah, online.
They do have some online information, Department of Revenue, anybody can, can look at that. It just, if they're going to mail it, it needs to be postmarked by April 1 for homestead application.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. All right. Any other questions? We're ready for.
This, uh, ordinance can be voted on now by roll call vote.
Did I hear a motion?
Mayor, I move approval of the ordinance.
I second, that was a motion by Counselor Thomas, seconded by, uh, Counselor Garrett. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Uh, councilors, when they call your name, please register your vote, yes or no.
Allen?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Crab?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Huff?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that vote carried unanimously by the 10 members.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Clerk. The last item, Mayor, for business action is an ordinance to amend the Columbus, Georgia pension plan. And this is a request, a recommendation of the pension board of trustees. It only affects a certain group, certain joint and survivor option retirees. And I'm going to let Ms. Scheftall go through the highlights of what this will do. It is prospective only, not retroactive, but I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Scheftall for just a minute.
Good evening, members and councilors. This plan amendment deals with only 47 retirees who retired on or before June 30, 1998 and took a reduced benefit in order to provide survivor benefits for their spouses. The employees who have retired since June 30, 2020 and made this election have had the benefit that their pension would increase or as it's called in the business, pop up if and when their spouse predeceives them and they didn't use that survivor benefit. This amendment will allow for the pre-July 1988, 1998 retirees to get the same treatment as the others beginning April 1. So it is prospective only. Our actuary reviewed the cost of the change. It will add about $33,000 a year, um, to the city's annual contribution for both the general government and public safety plans over the next, um, few years. And this is a very obviously small group of people and, um, this is trying to give them a benefit, um, commensurate with what everybody else has for the time remaining to them.
All right. Any, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Ms. Scheftall, didn't we do something similar to this a couple of years ago? Um, the pop-up, um, or some of the employees that, um, but it was far, far date certain and, and these 47 are just the ones that, that retired before that effective date? Didn't we do something like this?
Well, we did something that had to do with another type of benefit calculation that I think you were thinking of. Certain of the options had had certain actuarial assumptions built into them. This is a little different. This is simply a benefit that there was an ordinance on the books that said you couldn't have this benefit if you retired before June 30, 1998. And we're just simply now that it's gotten down to so few people and we can afford to treat them like everyone else, we're going to do it going forward.
Okay. I, I thought I remembered something along that line, but thank you.
I've got a quick question from a, from a financial standpoint, uh, uh, what kind of, uh, what kind of impact, the financial impact we talking about in this? I'm, I guess this will be carried into pension plan, right? Is it, is it going to have any kind of, uh, impact, uh, uh, currently or in the future? Are we just talking about a small adjustment here from a, from a financial support standpoint?
Right. It will require a small additional contribution of about $33,000 a year, which will decline, you know, fairly rapidly as the retirees age and few of them are there to receive the benefit.
So it's just relatively very small impact on the pension plan?
Right. And we did have the actuary study that.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? We can vote on this, uh, so, uh, anybody want to make a motion to approve? So anybody wanna make a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
All right. Motion by Councilor... Is there a second?
John Hough, second.
All right. Councilor House will second. Counselors, again, please respond with a yes or no. Madam Clerk?
Allen.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Craft.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Garrett.
Yes.
House.
Yes.
Huff.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that vote carried unanimously to approve.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Your city attorneys, that all?
Yes, that's all our official agenda tonight, Mayor. I appreciate it.
All right. Ms. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a few items on my agenda. First, I've got substantial amendment to the HUD program year 2017, which is the city's fiscal year 2018 Annual Action Plan, and the HUD program year 2019, which is the city's fiscal year 2020 Annual Action Plan. So, asking...
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve?
This is Allen, so move.
All right. Mayor Protem made the motion. Who seconded?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I lost you for a second, but can you hear me?
Yes, sir. They've got a motion, and Councilor Garrett has made it second. So that has been properly moved and seconded. Are there any, is there any discussion? Here and none. Clerk, if you would, call the roll.
Allen.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Garrett.
Yes.
House.
Yes.
Huff.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that carried unanimously by the ten members present to approve.
Okay. City Manager?
Next, Mr. Mayor and Council, I've got Dragonfly Connection, the Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and Tenth Avenue to the Red Wall.
Second. Motion to approve by Councilor Garrett. And I think there's a second by Councilor Garrett. Any discussion as to number two?
Yes, to the motion. I just wanna make sure, just, I think these are kind of areas that people are gonna ask questions of, and this is, this is a restricted fund, correct?
The funding comes from T. Sploes Part of it, eight hundred and fifty thousand, and six hundred thousand from the 1999 special purpose local option, sales tax for Liberty District. And so, the T. Sploes dollars and 1999 Sploes dollars total 1.45 million, so it's not general fund money for those special funds.
Well, and thank you, Ms. City Manager, for saying that. I just wanna make sure that people understand that, I mean, these are, you know, look, a lot of the questions that we have that we'll be talking about is dealing with revenue and the impact of revenue, and I think people are gonna ask questions when they see things pop up and approvals of things like this. But I think it's important for everybody to understand that there's a big difference between restricted funds and the purpose and what you can use those for versus a general fund or fund balance. So I just wanted to make sure that people know that, that, I guess, spending is not being termed frivolous.
Yes, and then I would mention that there's a private, it's a public-private partnership in that the friends of the Dragonfly Trails paid for engineering and design for this trail connection, so there's private dollars involved as well.
Thank you, Ms. City Manager.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll vote. Can't hear you. You might be muted, ma'am.
Allen.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Craft.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Garrett.
Yes.
House.
Yes.
Huff.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that carried unanimously by the ten members.
Thank you. Ms. City Manager?
Next, Mr. Mayor, I've got a fire EMS from the other local option sales tax. I'm asking approval to reallocate $45,000 of other local option sales tax dollars. And though it's coming from personal protective equipment, turnout gear, telephones, wireless service for emergency apparatus and software lease, staffing software projects, they had money leftovers in those categories, those we're not delaying or postponing.
Move for approval.
Councilor Woodson, second.
All right. Motion by Huff and second by Woodson. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilor Thomas. As I understand it, this emergency outdoor warning siren is what, where we get our 911 calls and was completely destroyed, right? Isn't that...
It's not.
Yeah, this is, this is, yeah, go ahead, City Manager.
Yeah, you're correct. It's not working at this time, and we know that, I mean, it should've been done, but we're in the tornado season, and we don't want citizens to be left without a method of warning them that an event is occurring.
Yeah. This is, this is not necessarily the 911 calls. This is our, this is our emergency warning for bad weather, and the area that got hit one year ago, it took that, one of the sirens down.
The Saturday siren.
That's, yes, ma'am. The Saturday siren. The high noon siren. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Barnes.
Yes. Allen, yes. Sorry.
I'm sorry, Councilor Allen, was that yes?
Yes.
Okay. Craft.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Garrett.
Can I keep this?
Yes.
House.
Yes.
Huff.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that carried unanimously by the ten members.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
And, Mr. Mayor, next is related to the T. R. project, the Spider Wolf project. We're asking approval to enter into an agreement with the Central of Georgia Railroad to ensure the coordination of construction activities while protecting the railroad line from any potential damage. And we will reimburse the Central of Georgia Railroad for costs associated with the maintenance, engineering, safety and construction related to this agreement to the tune of 1.7 million dollars. And all work under this agreement will be performed by the Central of Georgia Railroad. They require that an agreement be entered into prior to the construction of the bridge, and so we need this to move forward.
Move for approval, Councilor Huff.
Councilor Woodson.
Motion by Huff, second by Woodson. Any discussion? One question. Ms. City Manager, how soon will they start?
Well, we've still, obviously, got more work to be done, and that's part of getting that done. I don't have a timeline for them getting done what they need to get done, but it's a project that we know need to move forward. I don't like being stopped, and others don't like being stopped by the train on a day-to-day basis, numerous times throughout the day, so it's urgent project.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. Next...
Any other, hang on, we didn't vote. Any other discussion? All right. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Allen.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Craft.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Garrett?
Garrett, yes.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. House.
Yes.
Huff.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that carried unanimously by the ten members.
Thank you.
Mayor, next, I've got the project framework agreement for the construction of Military Drive from Infantry Road to the Hampton Inn. The National Infantry Museum has asked for assistance to construct a new south, north-south two-lane roadway to service the vacant land they own for commercial purposes.
This is Councilor Thomas, I move approval.
All right.
Second, this is Woodson.
All right. We've got a motion to second. Any discussion?
To the motion, yes. City Manager, would you talk a little bit about, I'm okay with the funding and all that, but I think under the agreement that currently with the NIF, I think it really, it spells it out, who's responsible for what. If the road is being constructed, installed and put in, how does that relate to future maintenance and upkeep and any kind of other type of changes or construction that might take place on that road?
Well, obviously, it's not going to be...
Funding agreement or...
Say it again.
Is this just a funding agreement, or is there more to be done on this agreement?
It's a funding agreement, and we are putting in a portion of the match as a 2.8, 2.2 million dollar construction project. Our portion is 280,000. They're donating the necessary right-of-way for the road, but it's coming from the paving fund, and we will have to amend the MOU, but it will be a city road. Did that answer your question?
Well, yes, I was just more concerned about the agreement in general. Are there further discussions to be had with the agreement in general that would help to provide the maintenance and upkeep of this road in the future?
Well, we are, as I said, we are going to, this is just a contract to start the engineering, but we will have to amend or do some work on the MOU, and if, amend the MOU, I should say, and if we need to do some things, add some things, or take some things out at that time when we amend the MOU, we can certainly do that. But this is the engineering.
Okay. So we'll circle back to that. I guess that's what, I'm okay with the funding aspect of it, but the rest of it, we'll circle back to later, right?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments or discussion? All right. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Councilor Barnes?
Craft.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Garrett.
Yes.
House.
Yes.
Huff.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodson.
Yes.
And I'll go back to check. Councilor Barnes? Okay. We have nine to approve, and Councilor Barnes is absent for this vote. It's approved, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a $92,673 no-match Homeland Security Grant. It's for the Homeland Security Grant Program, and the funds will be utilized for the maintenance of equipment received as part of the West Center, Georgia search and rescue. We're asking your approval.
Move for approval.
Councilor House, second. Councilor House, second.
All right. I heard Huff made the motion. Is that correct? And Councilor House made the second?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Madam Clerk?
Allen.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Craft.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Garrett.
Yes.
House.
Yes.
Huff.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that carried unanimously by the ten members.
Okay.
Mayor, I've got purchases. I've got security cameras and accessories for Metro Buses. It's 148,614 dollars, and these are federal transit purchases coming from the Transportation Fund. It's an 80/20, 20% city match. We're asking your approval.
And, Mr. City Manager, if we could, why don't we go through all of the purchases? We'll ask anybody if they want one pulled, and that way maybe we'll just have one roll call vote.
Sure. Then I've got annual Adobe licensing, subscription renewal and purchase of additional Adobe programs. The total, the grand total for this is 25,935.48. I've got public employee retirement system pension and benefits trust, and we're asking you to approve, it's a five-year agreement, and it's with Raymond James and Associates, asking your approval. Item D is pavement marking services. The anticipated value is 4.5 million dollars on an as-needed basis for pavement markings, services with peak pavement marking, and got area and ground ladder inspection and testing services for Columbus Fire EMS, 6,685. Those are the purchases, Mayor.
All right. Anybody have one they'd like to pull for questioning? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the entire slate of purchases.
House, favor, move, A through E.
All right. Councilor House made the motion. Did I have a second?
Craft, second.
Councilor Craft, second. All right. Since there was no discussion, Madam Clerk, you wanna call the roll, please?
Allen.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Craft.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Garrett.
Yes.
House.
Yes.
Huff.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodson.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, carried unanimously by the ten members. That's items A through E.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I've got one update. I've asked Nancy Borin, our Elections and Registrations Director, to talk to us. You know that the March 23 election that would've been held actually today was postponed, and there's been questions about that throughout the community as to how we're going to go forward. And so I've asked our Elections and Registrations Director, Nancy Borin, to come and give an update to council and to the public. So I'm gonna call on Nancy Borin at this time.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Good. First, let me say thank you for having us here this afternoon to talk about the elections. We had a conference call with the Secretary of State today, who advised us that the state will mail absentee ballot applications to every active registered voter in the state of Georgia. So if voters do not feel comfortable going to the voting precinct on Election Day, they'll be able to vote in the privacy and security of their home, and that, we just found that out today at noon. I have a PowerPoint available for you, hopefully. Technology will allow me to work this. Basically, talking about what happens to your ballot if you have already voted. Can you see my PowerPoint?
Not yet. Are we pulling that up?
Yes. It should be up. Mayor, if you'll let me know when you see it.
Yes, ma'am, I will.
You might want, you might want to try it again, Nancy. Okay.
We can share from our end if we need to.
I can do it, Jeremy, I believe.
Oh, there we go, we got it.
Oh, you got it, yay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so, let me get it on my end. All right, if you voted, are we good to go? If you voted in the March 24th, either absentee by mail or absentee in person, your ballot will be counted in the May 19th general primary election. Um, the ballot for May 19th that you will receive, if you are one of those 7,000 people that voted, your ballot for May 19th will contain the general primary candidates and the nonpartisan election candidates only. Your ballot selection will not be affected, though, by the ballot that you voted in March. So, for example, if you voted Democratic in the March primary and you wanted to vote Republican in the May primary, you can. So you are not tied to the ballot if you voted early, um, for March 24th. All right, what happens if you didn't vote, though? Let's say you kept putting it off and you didn't vote, so what happens? Your May ballot will contain the presidential candidates, the East Blast for Education, the general primary partisan candidates for federal, state, and local offices, as well as all of the nonpartisan election candidates that you are eligible to vote for. Voters will still have to select a ballot that they want to receive, whether it's Republican, Democrat, or nonpartisan, they can make that selection. So if you didn't vote, your ballot will have everything. It will have the presidential candidates, the East Blast, the general primary candidates, all of your federal, state, and local offices, and your nonpartisan election candidates. All right. Voter registration deadline is also moved. The voter registration deadline now for the May 19th general primary and presidential primary, if you didn't vote, is now April 20th, so you can still register to vote. If you are 65 or older and disabled and you've requested a ballot for the calendar year, you will receive that ballot by mail when it, whenever it's available. Remember, if you are 65 and older or disabled, you can request a ballot one time for the remainder of the calendar year by completing an absentee ballot application. And as I said earlier, the state will be proactively mailing absentee ballot applications to all active registered voters. And remember, you can always request an absentee ballot without a reason. All right, I put up some websites in case someone is interested. You can go to myvoterpage.sos.ga.gov. That's always a great place to go if you want information, sample ballots, who your district representatives are, where your precinct may be. You can also track your absentee ballot. You, you can tell whether or not we've received your application, or whether your absentee ballot has been mailed from our office or received by our office. You can also go to columbusga.gov/elections, and you can see their candidate information. Um, it'll give you links to a variety of other, um, websites where you can get elections information. If you are not registered to vote and you would like to register, or you need to make changes to your current voter registration, if you go to registravote.sos.ga.gov, you can do that online. And always, you can call the Elections Office. We're at 706-653-4392, and we are accepting, of course, faxes if you would like to fax your application in. I put my email address up here, it's nboran@columbusga.org, and our mailing address, if you need to mail any information to us. We are accepting absentee ballot applications by email. You can even take a picture of it with your phone and send the picture to us. So we're trying to be very flexible when it comes to, um, receiving your absentee ballot application. Uh, we have remained operational, even though we are working with a very skeleton crew. We do anticipate, though, with scaling up for the mail process, that we are going to have to work, but we'll work in shifts, so that we don't have more than 10 people at a time in the office. And if you have any questions, you can just, uh, let me know.
Any questions for Ms. Boren?
Councilor Huff here. Director Boren, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Receiving lots of, uh, questions about the elections. If you would, walk through the, uh, differences between requesting a Democratic ballot versus a Republican ballot versus a nonpartisan ballot.
Okay. If you request a nonpartisan ballot for the general primary, you will only see the nonpartisan candidates or the special election for the East Blast. That is on your nonpartisan ballot. If you request nonpartisan, you won't see candidates for sheriff or candidates for any of the partisan offices. If you request a Democratic or a Republican ballot, you will see only the Democratic candidates and the nonpartisan candidates and the special election. If you request Republican, it'll be the Republican candidates with nonpartisan and the special election. In Georgia, we always have open primaries, so you are not tied to the party you have voted in previous elections. We don't register by party, so you can choose whatever party ballot you would like to choose.
Okay, thank you. I think someone was confused about the fact that if they, uh, requested a, uh, nonpartisan ballot, they would have access to all of the candidates, which they would not.
They would not. They would only have, uh, judges, council, school board, and the East Blast election.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Ms. Boren, is this presentation going to be put in our website, or where people can go back and look at that contact information in case, sorry, I'm losing my voice again, um, in case they didn't get an opportunity to write it down?
I have submitted that, and I'm sure that Jeremy can make sure that that is on our, um, on our website, so that voters and other interested people can have it, um, to refer to. Gets kind of confusing sometimes talking about nonpartisan and partisan, so we'll make sure that that's on not only the city's website, the elections' website.
Yeah, it's important to put, put those two, um, questions and answers on there, plus the information on the different ways that they can contact or get their ballots or whatever, you know, they might need. Sorry for my voice. My asthma, I'm having a good time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions of Ms. Boren? Well, it's a terrific job underneath trying circumstances, and by the way, you and the Secretary of State's office, I think, have done a great job trying to, trying to make sure that all of the citizens feel like they're going to have an opportunity to cast their ballot despite this, this, uh, this ongoing pandemic. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if there are no further other questions, that concludes my agenda.
All right, well, thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, we'll move on to your agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. For the Clerk's Agenda, Item One is a Resolution to Council the March 31st, 2020 Consent Agenda Work Session, and the April 7th, 2020 Monthly Proclamation Session.
Move approval. This is Councilor Woodson.
Second.
Is that a motion by Councilor Woodson and second by Councilor Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
This is Councilor Thomas. Um, given the, the unrest, if you will, or the, the things that are going on right now, that we don't know from one day to the next, um, what's going to be happening with this pand- uh, pandemic, um, if we cancel the March 31st meeting, and sometime between now and then, um, we feel a, a need to have that meeting because of something that happens, um, along the way that we need to take action on, what is the process for doing that?
Uh, if, I think if, fortunately, what we've passed allows us to kind of function in that, in that situation, but, uh, if we needed to call a meeting, oh, we, we just contact the city attorney and have him, uh, make the proper notification, and, uh, we could get the meeting pulled together.
Does that take a seven-day notice, or a 24-hour notice?
No, I, Mr. City Attorney, I think you were talking about, in an emergency situation, we could get it done in, in a much shorter time.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, are you, are you on? How about the deputy, uh, the Assistant City Attorney? Well, we will ask him about that. It is doable, and we'll be able to do that, uh, if, if, uh, if need be. Uh, but we'll, uh, we'll, we will not have any shortage of opportunities to be able to communicate to, not only to council, but also to the public with regards to what's going on with the pandemic.
I don't anticipate that we would have, um, reason to do that, except that we don't know from one day to the next what this, um, situation is going to be. Two weeks ago, we had no idea that we would be meeting like this.
Right.
On another week, who knows what we'll be doing.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that we don't, we have not closed out any, um, uh, authority or any, um, way that the council itself can be called together if we need to do that.
No, we can, we can...
If council wants to do that.
We can do that. We can get council together if need be.
Yeah, Mayor?
Yes.
The, uh, state law that we cited in the declaration adopted tonight, Title 50, uh, dash 14, dash 1G, allows these telephonic meetings whenever it's necessary during a period of emergency. So, this can be done, uh, as often as needed during this emergency.
With notice to the public.
With notice to the public, like we gave tonight.
What's the notice requirement?
Uh, as soon as we know the date, we'll let the media have the, um, date and time of the meeting.
But is there a required, uh, amount of time that we have to?
Not if there's a true emergency.
No, you can do it even on less than 24 hours' notice during an emergency.
Okay. We're, I think we're, we're good. We'll be able, but we've got, um, yeah, we can get the council together.
I, I'm just concerned that we are, uh, now saying we're not going to meet again until the 14th of April, and in today's climate, I just want to make sure that if we need to meet before the 14th of April, um, we have the authority and the wherewithal and the, uh, whatever we need to do that.
We do. Keep in mind, ti- yeah, typically, those meetings between now and the 14th would have been just a work session with a, a consent agenda that was, you know, but I, I understand what you're saying. If there's something that y'all need to take action on, we can get you together.
Okay.
All right? All right, uh, we had a motion and a second. I think the motion was by, um, uh, Councilor Woodson, and the second was by, uh, Thompson. Uh, any, any further discussion?
Right.
Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Okay, um, Allen?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Huff?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that carried unanimously by the ten members.
Okay.
Item Two is a resolution, receiving the report of the Director of Finance concerning certain alcoholic beverage licenses for the month of February.
Move...
Motion by Councilor Woodson? Is there a second? Is that Councilor Allen? Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Allen? All right, uh, motion by Woodson, uh, second by Mayor Pro Tim. Uh, any discussion? You call the roll, Counselor. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Allen?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Davis? Davis?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Huff?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, that was approved unanimously by the ten members. Next, we have minutes of various boards to be received.
The minutes to be received.
Second.
Motion to receive by Mayor Pro Tim and second by Councilor Garrett. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Allen?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Davis? Davis? Garrett?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Huff? Huff?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Woodson?
Yes.
I'll go back. Davis? Okay, Councilor Davis is absent for this vote. It was approved by nine members of council.
Okay.
Next, Mr. Mayor, for the Clerk's Agenda, we have board appointments. We have council appointments that are ready for confirmation. The Board of Historic and Architectural Review, Ms. Emily Flornoy, was nominated to succeed Mr. Tyler Allen as the Uptown Business Association Representative. She may be confirmed.
Second.
Motion by the Mayor Pro Tim, second by Councilor Woodson. Uh, you'll call the roll?
Allen?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Craft?
Yes.
Davis? Garrett?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Huff?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Woodson?
Yes.
And I'll go back. Davis? Councilor Davis is absent for this vote. She was approved by nine members of council.
Okay.
Next, we have council district appointments. Any nominations will be confirmed for the next meeting, I'm sorry, can be confirmed this meeting, for the Community Development Advisory Council. We still have open for nominations. The seats for Council District Two, Four, Seven, and Nine. And lastly, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting for the Animal Control Advisory Board. The seat of Carol Bassett is open for nominations. Here and now, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, well, uh, can I just thank, thank you, thank you for, uh...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Councilor Woodson?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I was, um, I was asked by, um, can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I was asked by, um, Mark Rice of the, um, Ledger Inquirer, um, about how we responded to the ongoing, um, pandemic. And what I said is that I have to compliment you as the leader of this city for being as proactive as you were, first of all, in notif- in interfacing with the Health Department. And here's the really important thing, constantly letting the citizens of this city know exactly what they needed to do. You laid a lot of fear. Now, why am I saying that? Uh, unfortunately, I had to go to two different cities in two different states on family emergencies, which were taken care of. But in neither one of those two cities were the city, citizens as compliant with the directives that we received from Dr. Fauci, the CDC, as far as, um, personal distancing, which is extremely... as far as personal distancing, which is extremely, extremely important. And I know you had to make some really, really, really tough decisions. But as a healthcare professional, I know how important it was to make decisions like that so that we can arrest the spread of this virus. And so, I just wanted to give kudos, not only to you, but also to the city manager, the staff. I want to echo what Counselor Thomas said about the 3-1-1. Center, they were a blessing. And the compliance of the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, for everybody getting together and doing what was asked of us to do, not only as citizens of the city of Columbus, but as residents of the United States of America, which impacts every city. So, I just wanted to get that information to you and let you know that was a, you know, as an over 20-year veteran, I really, really, really love strong leadership, and that's exactly what you did.
Well, thank you, sir. It's been, it's truly been a team effort to include the council because we have been in constant communication with just about every single one of the members of council. And we are addressing this challenge the way we do everything in Columbus, and that is united and together and looking after one another. So, I just thank all of you, too, for the efforts that you've put forth as we continue to try to deal with this challenge.
Mr. Mayor? I want to also echo your great leadership. You were possibly around someone who could or could not be with the virus, and you took your, the leadership to go ahead and quarantine yourself. That speaks a lot for your leadership. I, too, as a veteran, am believing in leadership in a chain of command. I think you did an amazing job. You proved to the citizens that you walk the talk. And I think that's very important, and I'd like to tell staff, too, thank you because some of y'all know would like to be at home, but yet you're still making sure the city is being run. To the IT, Jeremy, this is fantastic what he was able to do so that we can meet today via conference. I haven't seen interviews anywhere else where any other community has done what our community has done. So, to you and to staff and to my colleagues, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Huff here.
Yes, sir.
I've tried for two weeks now, and I made a phone call to the Liberty Theater on Thursday.
Yes, sir.
And received a voicemail saying that somebody would get back with me in a business day or two. So, I gave it Friday and yesterday and today. So, I hadn't been able to access the theater in two weeks. So, if I could get some assistance, tell me who I could call to be able to get inside.
We'll, we'll, we'll try to get you somebody you can contact, although right now, all theaters and entertainment venues are pretty much shuttered for a couple of weeks. So, but we'll try to get you in touch with a member of the board.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. And I, too, want to thank.
A clerk of council, Sandra, I didn't need to leave you out. When I said staff and I said 3-1-1, I meant to include your staff as well.
Absolutely. Great job by all. And I do want to especially lift up Mike King and.
Paul Barnes.
Jeremy Miles. And Forrest Toley for putting this together. I heard a motion to adjourn from.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I had to step out for a minute. And can I, I'd just like to bring a couple of things to your attention in closing.
Yes, sir.
You know, I think we're all trying to deal with this situation. I think it's understandable, and we're all trying to deal with it with either personal or with business or from whatever point. But I have not been, you know, being able, I guess, to go to the websites and so forth. But I guess my question is, I think communication is really important during this period on a daily basis. And I would ask, are citizens able, there's so many questions coming up, are they able to go somewhere on a site that kind of spells a lot of this stuff out versus having to dig for it if the city is able to communicate, whether it's needs for our senior citizens, whether it's people? I've had several asking me for help, you know, consumer help or business help. Where do they go? SBA, different places like that. Do we have anything? I guess I'm using those, a couple of those as examples. There's going to be impact to our citizens. But being able to help them where they could go to a site and maybe give them a roadmap of guidance where places they could go because, you know, everybody's going to struggle with this differently in trying to get to the, get to the right place. Are we helping in any way from that standpoint with our government website and any other type tool that we might have to just to, just to be there and do the best we can to help people, whatever their situation may be?
We are. Our website will help direct them to anything locally. We are taking calls and emails and texts in the mayor's office, city manager's office, 911. We've, all of the department heads have been getting calls, and we've been helping folks. There's also the United Way that's had a concerted effort going to try to make sure that for local businesses and for people that are kind of the underserved, they're taken care of. Pat Fray with the Home for Good has been working with Holly, and we're trying to make sure those folks are taken care of. Uptown Columbus and some other merchant organizations have been working to make sure that the SBA information that you mentioned is put out. And there are some philanthropic and charitable initiatives underway right now. And as soon as those things kind of gel, they'll be putting those out for resources for people. We've been, we've been trying to communicate with people on a regular basis. We will, we will start this next, this week, every day with a short update just because the CDC is updating their information twice a day, and DPH is, rather, twice a day. So, we'll be taking their information and making sure that people get the updates.
Well, that's good. As long as, I guess, if we have pages or a site where we can show them where these resources are directed, that would be great. The other thing is, I think that there's probably going to be a lot of conversations that need to be had, both from a micro and a micro level of impact to our city with all the decision-making coming up, budgets fixing to come up. Things are changing, and most likely, there's going to be, there's going to be impact all around. Are we going to have opportunity to do, I guess, small groups and talk through some of these things? Or how would you recommend? I know the city manager earlier sent out, I think it was maybe yesterday, sent out something on everybody turning in their thoughts towards an operational plan or a contingency plan, well, an emergency plan now and where we're going. How do we, that wasn't talked about tonight. But how do we get that information? How do we have those conversations? Are we going to do it through this venue, small groups, or continue to do this on a, I think somebody said, on a continual basis from this venue?
Well, there's several different areas that you touched on, and I think each one probably is communicated differently. Obviously, the budgetary side, and we are, we're already factoring that in. We're working on trying to adjust to a best-case, worst-case, and sort of middle-of-the-road scenario as we start putting together the mayor's recommended budget. Department heads are helping with that. There's some other information that you touched on, and that is the operating plan in the event of this thing really ratcheting up. How are we going to continue to deliver services? Most of those have already been done for the critical services. But for all the different departments, and I know the city manager can probably kick in on this, but what they're working on is how their individual departments, even if they're not frontline personnel, are going to react if, in the event, we have to close the government to the public. So, that information, we can get y'all a copy of that, just so you know how they're going to, how they're going to react to that. And the other thing, we can do small groups, or what I had intended to do is just do a phone call once a week with council. Or if things dictate and start moving quicker, we'll do it twice a week. But we'll just try to make sure that council has all the information that we have so that you can help to respond to the people that are contacting you.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Anything else before we adjourn? All right. I thought I heard a motion from Counselor Garrett. Was that Garrett?
It was.
Is there a second?
Second, by Kraft.
All right. Second by Kraft. All in favor may just say aye on this one.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Counselor.
Stay safe out there.